I'm calling to order the Public Works Committee meeting of January 22, 2009. Will the meditator please call the roll?
Alderman Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Police?
Here.
Alderman Louis Tan? Alderman Shaki?
Here.
Alderman Cadella? Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Knight?
I declare a quorum. I make a motion to approve minutes dated January 8, 2009. Is there a second?
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is item number four, and that's a report and recommendation on the Metro train station. And with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Bond, our attorney, to start us out on this.
Thank you, Chairman Winger. If you recall, I last attended your committee meeting on January 8, 2009. At that time, the committee had given direction to me to report back to Metro. We had previous discussions about relocating the train station and so on and so forth. There were some specific concerns that the committee members had relative to the Metro agreement that was proposed. I sent a letter out on the following day, January 9, to Keith Partnett. He's with the Law Department at Metro, outlining the concerns the city had, specifically the desire to retain the ability to lease out those portions of the facility, including coffee and beverage services, as well as banking and ATM uses. And essentially, the only restriction would be for those uses would be they'd have to be consistent with the city code. And again, the only concern that Metro had was that there wouldn't be any uses that were not consistent with railroad uses, or that were going to be like adult uses, or some kind of a bookstore, or something like that, they didn't want to see. And I also indicated to them that we had an issue with the parking and the fees from the parking, that we would, since the city was maintaining the parking lot, it was only appropriate that the money at the conclusion of the agreement be returned to the city, as well as some of the other items that was brought to the attention of the committee, including the demolition of the existing station, and whether or not there'd be any financial participation. I did speak to, I'd asked Mr. Partnett to give me a written response, in order to have that for this committee. He did receive the communication. He wasn't able to give me a written response. He did say that he looked it over. It looked good. He didn't have any clear direction on the cost sharing of the demolition. The other items, he said, were going to be acceptable to Metro, and we would get something in writing to that effect. The one thing, the retaining of the parking fees, you know, he didn't see frankly that being an issue, since he doesn't ever anticipate that this agreement would ever truly come to a conclusion. As long as we're not using hovercrafts, or something to that effect, there's going to be a Metro train station there, and there'll need to be parking for that train station. So, you know, I thought that would be a bigger issue from their standpoint. He said it really, really wasn't. So it looks like all of the items that we'd included in that, and I believe all of you had a copy of that, that we included in that, and I provided a redlined or marked version of the agreement for them to look at, seemed to be acceptable, with the exception of the one he didn't have any direction on, that was the demolition costs, and whether or not Metro would be participating. So I just wanted to give you an update this evening, that it looks promising. I told him I needed to have something by next Thursday in writing, whether it's a revision to the marked agreement, or some letter relative to those particular changes, so that we could put that in the board packet, and perhaps take action on it at the next City Council meeting on February 4. So that's the status of it as it exists at this moment.
Thank you. Alderman Wesley?
Also, Pat, was also the signage included in that? I know you shouldn't have mentioned that.
Yeah, the signage, we had, the only thing that Metro, we indicated we wanted to retain the signage rights, both on the facility and in the parking lot. And one of the things that we indicated was any signs that were in furtherance of the train operations. He made that very clear, that we couldn't, you know, ace them out. And I don't think it was anybody's intention to say, you can't say when the next train is, or any train operations. And so that was also in the letter, and he'd indicated that that was going to be acceptable, again, subject to the final written approval from Metro.
Okay, may I do one follow-up? My other question is, there's no one here from the Building Department today. Do we contact the contractor, and do we get extension on that, or do we not get extension on that contract?
Yeah, Mr. Forrest did get in touch with the contractor, and we did get the extension offhand. I can't recall how long the extension was, but I, to March, but we did get the extension in writing.
Okay, so hopefully by next City Council, I'm Chairman, that we could get this finally passed and wrapped up here. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Mayor?
Just to be clear on the parking lot issue, again, we own the parking lot. I don't think Metro should have any oversight and control over the lot that we own. And the reason I get into that is because I think we need to preserve our options. That sometimes, in the past, we've talked about a parking garage structure, and other times in the past, we've talked about a possible parking with condos above. And I just don't want to give Metro any kind of veto rights over our own property. So, we bought it, we paid for it, I think it's...
Alderman Wesley?
I believe Pat did clarify that they don't want that. It's a...
Well, I think they'd want it.
No, but I thought you clarified that that will not be an issue.
Right. I think they would prefer to have it that way, but they're willing to accept the modifications that we said, which makes sense. I mean, it's, the city owns the property, the city's maintaining the property, you know, the two, the station and the parking work in conjunction with one another. You can't, you don't need one without the other, but it's a city property, and the city ought to have retained exclusive control over what happens on that property.
Okay, so at this point, I believe it would be for information only. Okay, then that concludes item number four. Next item, report and recommendation on the scope of services for a contract for Baxter and Woodman for the industrial pretreatment program. And fortunately, this is a piece of work that we were looking at doing, and fortunately, it is several thousand dollars under budget, and it is a sum of $74,500. So I'm going to go ahead, make the motion, look for a second, and then we'll have discussion on this. I make a motion to approve the agreement with Baxter and Woodman for professional services for the industrial pretreatment program, in the amount not to exceed $74,500. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, then with that, Mr. Kramer, would you like to give us overview and any highlights on this before we go ahead and vote?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman Winger. This evening, before you do have that scope of services for the industrial pretreatment program, that was discussed and selected by Baxter and Woodman back in May, the committee. This evening with me, I have Steve Zener from Baxter and Woodman, as well as Brad Kittleson, to answer any questions regarding the industrial pretreatment program. At this time, I think I'll bring Steve up and have him just kind of give a quick overview of the program, and then if there's any questions, we can take them at that time.
The program is a federally mandated program, and it controls, it assists you in controlling your industrial user base, to make certain that they're not discharging any pollutants that are non-compatible. The IEPA has had oversight of this program essentially since its inception in the mid-'80s. IEPA vacated that responsibility in 2000, 2001, and US EPA has been going around since that time, and basically picking up the pieces and trying to get everything back onto a level playing field. We, the city experienced a visit from an inspector, that visit resulted in a fairly lengthy letter. It's a letter that is very common for this particular inspector. There are a number of issues that are identified, and those are included in the task list that we have attached to our letter. There are a number of things that we're going to be doing here over the next couple, three years, trying to get everything to a point where it's sustainable and moving forward. US EPA has looked at mandating, and IEPA has agreed, that one particular component in here, the local limits development, be on a five-year rolling basis. That is to say, that we will do this initial local limits development and sampling exercise, and US EPA will require that every five years, six months before you submit your next MPDS permit, this time because it'll break a little bit differently, we may get by without having to do it on five years. But updating that data, recalculating to make sure that the data, or that your local limits are sufficient and adequate. Are there any particular questions? Because I could talk on this for days.
Alderman Wesley?
I just have one question for staff. I know the contract's for $74,500, okay? My question is, staff, are we going to see progress of this work, the way it's going and to pay it out that way? Or are we giving a check for $74,500? I do not want another land vision like we had, that we made payments affirm that this council did not see any documents still, from day one, and we keep making payments. My question to staff, is it in their contract that before they get paid, is it that we're going to see documents of the way this procedure's going, monthly, on what they completed before we paid the bill? That's my question. And I don't know if you should answer that, or staff should answer that question.
All right. My answer to you is, we will provide you with monthly updates, if not more frequent updates. We will be interacting with your staff on a daily basis, as we go through some of these pieces. Some of them will not require your staff's constant involvement, but these are the industries that help support this community. It's important that you understand, we're here to build a team, and the team leaders are these gentlemen right here. I'm just the water boy. So I'm here to help, and I will be providing them with that information. We will be providing you with monthly status reports, along with our invoices. They'll include all of our hours that we've worked, so...
Well, Steve, the intent, I think, of that question then, is to have that in the scope of work, before it's signed off on. So if you can add that verbiage in there, if it's not in there already, the written monthly reports, and any other statuses.
If I may. I guess what I would, or hope to do, is if this proposal's acceptable, that you'll pursue it, or ask that we draw an agreement up that specifically outlines that, and in that agreement, we have standard language that does include those elements that Alderman Wesley identified.
Alderman Wesley?
I'm Chairman, I don't care how they design it, I was part of this committee, they were well-rep designed, I have complete confidence. I just don't want the City Council to do what we did once before, start paying out and not seeing any documents. I mean, that's, is my point of view. I will, if I don't see any documents, and there's a set of bills here, I'll tell you one thing, right now, I would vote no for the bill. Okay? That's what I'm saying. I don't care if you want to have staff write another agreement with them, add that in, I will feel comfortable with that, with no problem, but I have no problem awarding this contract to them, though.
Okay, well, I think that this is the initial draft of the agreement that you were looking for approval on, correct?
Correct, it was.
So then my request would be to add in that verbiage, and bring it back next week at the council level, so we can approve it all in one, all in one sweep.
Staff can do that.
And the verbiage specific? Can you tell me exactly what the verbiage is that you're looking for, or is staff familiar with that verbiage? I want to make certain that, since it's only a week, that I get it to you quickly.
I think staff is pretty much aware of what direction I am going with this. Jeff, I believe you are aware of the direction I want with this. So if you could contact our staff, I think they will be more than happy to explain it.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Alderman Police?
All I was going to say is, I know we're talking to City Manager, but when we brought up the last contract that we had problems with, he mentioned something on the correct verbiage for the contract, so he would be the one to...
Contact our staff, while...
Okay. Alderman Louis Tan?
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, before I ask my questions, I would like to say that what has just been brought up by Alderman Wesley is very apropos to the situation. And I think what I interpreted is that there would be benchmark goals along the route to the finished product, and no payment will be made for work that has not reached each benchmark. Steve, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name.
Zener.
Is that what's agreeable with you, that there will be benchmarks along the way? And as you give in a final report that that benchmark is reached, that's when you'll submit the bill for that phase of the work?
Well, we've identified three tasks, and a couple of these tasks will be, some of the tasks are a little bit more readily achievable than others. So there will be some tasks that will take maybe a couple months, maybe three months. And what I would offer is to provide to you a status report of where we are with those specific tasks. Those elements, though, you know, I'm not going to be able to publish for you a document that says, "These are your local limits," and give you two of the local limits, when there's 26 of them that have to be done, and it's going to take that time to go through it. I guess I would look for you to give to me a little bit of what it is that you want. I want to make certain that I achieve what you're looking for, but, you know, this is a federally mandated program, and it's, some pieces of it are rather arcane, others are cutting-edge.
Well, would you categorize these as unfunded mandates from the federal government?
I can't imagine anybody in the pretreatment program not categorizing them as unfunded mandates. But I will tell you, even though they are unfunded mandates, it's your wastewater treatment plant, and there is a benefit to you, to being able to control how things come into your plant, and how they go out of your plant.
My only point in bringing that up, that you are in agreement that it is an unfunded mandate, therefore those people who are responsible for making the payment are concerned that the payments are made on a timely, matching basis with the work that's submitted. The breakdown, Mr. Kittle will arrange for the breakdown in fair arrangements that you can both agree to. We can only mention the global aspect of what we're looking for. These technical points of when you reach these 26 goals, that should be worked out with staff.
Mr. Kramer, do you currently have a payment agreement in place with Baxter and Woodman on how this is going to flow?
More based on the task requirement, and then when staff feels comfortable that an item is completed, then we'll agree that, you know, we can bill that portion of it out. If the committee is comfortable, we can include those status reports that staff gets as information items, and include that in as well, and then update therein. I would think that this process, at some parts, is going to go fast, and in other areas, I think it's going to be rather time-consuming. So as far as monthly payments, I think that's not something that we were thinking towards. I think it was more, as the tasks get completed, we would then bill out for time at that point.
And I would agree that that is probably the best way to do this, and it's pretty standard operating procedure, correct?
Correct. And we can include some stronger language in that agreement, and then bring it back to City Council at that point, and look for approval there.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to give a few more people a chance, and then I'll come back to you. Alderman Louis Tan?
Yes, thank you. It wasn't that long ago that we voted on a company to rehab, or bring our water treatment system up to par. How does this differ, for the public who's watching this, how does this differ from that program?
Well, the pretreatment program regulates our industries in town, and what they can discharge to us. Basically because we're responsible for the sludge we land-apply, and the effluent we discharge into Salt Creek. I'm sure many of you know that currently, the EPA and discharges along Salt Creek belong to the Salt Creek-Dupage River group, and are developing TMDLs now, and this is part of that also. The treatment plant upgrade is basically for equipment and processes as the treatment plant operates. But most of the pollutants and industries delivered to the plant pass through the plant, and that's why the pretreatment program is in place. It's for the industries pretreat their own discharge prior to the point where it gets to us, and passes through our plant, and either goes into our sludge, or goes into the creek untreated.
May I continue?
Yes.
So you're saying that this is really for the industry we have in town?
Correct.
But we have to take it out of our budget?
Correct. Well, the industries in town are surcharged on their utility bills for this.
That's fine, thank you.
Alderman Coles?
All I'd like you to do is, I read that thing, and just making an amendment to this, instead of copying this all over again, wasting paper, just put an amendment in there about the billing. Instead of going through all the trouble of rewriting it, and retyping it, and more paperwork, then just put an amendment in that bills will be a monthly, or six weeks, or something like that. And just don't put dates on. We had one that came in here with just dates on, and not saying what they did. And I think that you got to explain why.
That's exactly how we'll phrase it, as far as the task-oriented, and then build out after the tasks are completed.
Alderman Louis Tan, do you have any final comments?
Well, the question I wanted to ask before, I was impressed by Alderman Wesley's comment, was I wanted to ask Brad Kittleman and John Kramer, on these pretreatments, I noticed that some of them are heavy metals, and if they get through, we don't have the ability to take heavy metals out of our water at all. Brad, well, you've answered it. The answer is yes, we don't have the ability to take heavy metals out. So how can we be sure that all heavy metals are removed before they come into our waste? Mr. Zener?
Thank you. Actually, there is some removal efficiency that happens in a wastewater treatment plant. The biological process is specifically designed to remove human waste. Along with that, though, the bugs that are out there actually can consume some metals concentrations, and that metals, those metals actually go out into the sludge. That sludge is land-applied onto fields, and typically those are crop fields. So there are specific limitations for some of those metals. There are also, the remainder of those metals actually discharge into the receiving stream. In here, Brad had discussed the TMDLs, that's Total Maximum Daily Load. Essentially, what happens is that residual is discharged, and that if the residual is too high, can impact the biota in those receiving streams. And in particular, the Salt Creek area has specific limitations for some metals. Copper and zinc are two that are high on the US EPA's and IEPA's list. And what happens is, because of that, there is some wastewater, our wastewater, because we all consume vitamins, has some of those specific pollutants. What we have to do is go back up to the industrial users, identify a limitation that they have to meet, and then enforce that. And that's the idea behind all of this.
Okay, so you've, I'm going to paraphrase your answer. Yes, I'm right, that we do not have the ability to remove heavy metals like copper and zinc, and the purpose is to go back to the industrial users, that they biodegrade themselves, maybe that, no, they're not going to biodegrade, they're going to bio-clean their water before they discharge it to our cleanup area? And are they going to, are they going to, are we going to, how are we going to enforce it? If that's your answer, how do we enforce it?
There is an ordinance that is one of the functions here, and there are a couple of ways to enforce it. I mean, certainly, you know, you work together as a team, and the industry is brought in to be a partner to the team. If that team member doesn't want to participate in a fair and reasonable fashion, the city attorney gets involved, and there's enforcement proceedings. And the reason that we're going through this exercise is to make the documents that you have, so that they are enforceable.
Good answer, thank you.
Okay, so I see no further comments here. And there was a motion, a second, and I'd like to amend the motion to include direction to include some verbiage on written status reports, and I believe you know the details on that, and then also reference to billable payable.
Correct, we'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you. And then, one last, oh, does the second agree?
I agree.
Okay, and then one last comment. Can you take me through the difference, or why we're doing a surcharge versus charging this to like a special service area? Or would either be optional?
I think, and I don't know, I imagine that this was actually set up some time ago. What happened, though, back in the late '80s, is this was seen as an unfunded mandate, and many municipalities simply said, "We're doing this because you're here, you get to pony up." I think a special service area, though, has a specific time limitation.
Okay. That's probably why we're not doing a special service area.
A surcharge also included all the industries, because we have to look at all the industries. So, because the cost is basically shared among them all, we thought that was the fairest way to do it.
Right, okay, thank you. So there's a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Are you okay?
No.
Okay. Next item is item number six, report recommendation request for approval for vehicle number 236 purchased. So I make a motion that we approve the purchase of one vehicle through state purchase and Monroe Truck Equipment, in the amount not to exceed $121,162. Is there a second before we have discussion?
Second.
On the question? Mr. Mayor?
One thing I didn't note in your memorandum was the condition of 236, and what you're going to do with 236.
236 is currently not owned by the City of Wooddale. It was sold subsequent to last winter, after the snowstorm. It was not replaced directly after. There was some question as to what the direction would be. Originally, the City Services Director wanted to replace that truck with a tandem axle dump truck, without a plow, without a salter, and utilized it in the Utilities Department to haul spoil for the construction portion of that division. That did not come to fruition. We went through the winter, or most of this winter, with having only five of six plow trucks, and realized a need for it, and hence the reason we're coming to the committee to ask for the replacement of this vehicle in its original capacity, which is a plow and salt vehicle for Street Division.
And then, Alderman Shaki, did you wish to be recognized as well? I thought it's, Alderman Police, and Alderman Louis Tan? Alderman Police?
Other than the snowplow and salting and everything, is this truck going to be utilized all summer long? I mean, or is it going to be parked for four months?
All of our larger style vehicles, which would currently have five, are utilized for hauling asphalt in the summertime. Some are utilized for hauling logs to the dump, once we've chipped. We do have an excessive amount of vehicles during the summertime that do remain parked, solely for the basis that they are available during winter months for snowplowing operations. The way we have set up plowing operations is we have six zones throughout the city, and those six zones each are designated a large, single-axle-style dump-bodied vehicle, such as this one that's being proposed. And their main focus is to provide snow and ice control during that. So they're correct. There are some times in the summertime where you will see one or two of those vehicles sitting for perhaps a week, before they get used again in the rotation. So yes, for the most part, they are a snow and ice fighting vehicle. Ninety-five percent of their life, the other 5% could be, like I said, utilized for hauling asphalt, utilized for hauling logs. We really do not pull any trailers with these vehicles. They provide some brush collection support as well during the year, but for the most part, their main life is spent with a snowplow bolted to the front, and a salter bolted to the rear.
And how long do we keep these trucks?
Currently in our fleet, we have vehicles ranging in years from 10 to 12 years. That's normally the lifespan before they either get sent to another department, once they're stripped of their plow and salter, to run spoil for utilities operation, or haul waste from the wastewater treatment plant, South Plant up to North Plant, to the drying... waste from the wastewater treatment plant, south plant up to north plant to the drying beds. So traditionally, they are hand-me-down to other departments to be utilized, so you, so other departments don't get brand-new vehicles. Street Department pretty much breaks them in as a snow and ice control vehicle, and then they get divvied up from that point.
Alderman Louis Ten?
Mr. Kramer, just a couple, couple of questions. Let me ask them, kinda shoot, and you shoot back. Is this a aftermarket product?
The cabin chassis of the vehicle, which is being purchased through Prairie State as a state bid vehicle, that price is pretty much standard. There is some upfitting on the vehicle, which I think you're referring to, that can be done by other manufacturers. We had Monroe and Auto Truck listed on there, which may offer different body options, a tank option for liquid chloride, a different plow, a different salter. We try and make all of our trucks very similar for the option of if we need to switch out a plow or switch out a salter, we have the ability to do that rather fast.
Your answer is yes?
Yes.
I'm not familiar with, with the term pre-wet tank. What is a pre-wet tank? And what is it used for?
A pre-wet system is basically for snow and ice control. Pre-wetting means you're taking that rock salt that we traditionally ground-apply through the back of our auger-style spreader, and we pre-wet that salt with a chloride product to activate it, so it melts the snow and/or ice faster. So the pre-wet tank is basically a tank that's bolted to this truck, either in the front or on the rear, and allows us to pre-wet the rock salt, so it activates once it hits the pavement faster, allowing us to do a faster response for snow and ice control.
Then the answer is almost self-explanatory. A two-hundred-and-forty-gallon pre-wet tank is better than a hundred-and-twenty-gallon pre-wet tank?
Our city is such the size that it's not, it doesn't require us to have a larger tank, it's more the location of the tank, and where the vendor that we were getting quotes from, we were trying to compare apples to apples. Unfortunately, those two vendors did not both have the same size tank, so that's really the only true difference between the two. One vendor offered one size, one vendor offered another. For a tank that was located behind the bed of the truck and in front of the cab of the truck, that's why we specked it that way, so we could use this vehicle in the wintertime to also haul asphalt and logs. Currently, our...
In the wintertime?
Correct. Currently, our, all of our vehicles have pre-wet tanks that are located on the tailgate of the truck, and they limit us...